You're good.
Thank you, Carolyn. While they're finishing getting situated, thank you guys for joining us in 2:41. For those of you who haven't been here, I'd just like to remind you that the microphones are in the ceiling, so it's really helpful for audio capture if you speak across the table to your partner as opposed to in your documents or into your laptop. If we don't follow this rules, we should do a pretty good job recording everything. Thank you so much and have a good session.
Thank you so much, Nicole. You know, I will call this meeting to order and we will establish a forum by having a roll call. So, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Carizana. Not there. Mr. Vivins? Thank you.
Hey, thank you. As you look at the agenda today, it does look a little different. We are going to be covering all of the, I would say, all the ancillary business that you would have during the public hearings. We're going to cover today, as we don't have any public hearings. So with that, are there any matters not listed on the agenda from the public? All right, hearing done, we'll move on to the next item, which is our consent agenda. As you have had these documents previously and had a chance to review by the meeting minutes from February 28th, and that was a work session and the regular meeting, I'll ask if there's any amendments to those said documents. Hearing done, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk.
Yep.
Mr. Carizana. I'm sorry, Mr. Claiborne.
Yes.
Mr. Missile.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Vivins. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we'll move on to our work session, where we have some special guests and staff here for presentation discussion on the Albion County zoning ordinance modernization. So with that, I'll turn it over to the staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Claiborne. My name is Leah Brumfield. I am a senior planner two in zoning and community development, and today we are here for a work session on the zoning ordinance modernization project. We are joined by Rebecca Cobb and Chris Musso from the Berkeley Group, and we will be going over our progress to date and some phases that we'll be looking at, and then we're going to be going into the article review, which the commission should have received in their packets, and I'm sure we have lots of things to talk about. And then we'll go into our next steps following the article review, and we're off the races. So, to date, we are currently in phase one. We have a total of five anticipated phases for the zoning modernization project. Each of the phases has a focus on the different sections of the ordinance that will be rewriting and updating and reorganizing, so we're not blowing everyone away with a fire hose of changes and drafts. So the first phase, in addition to all the engagement and background research that we worked on with Berkeley Group to start off the project, to really launch everything, then this phase, we're working on articles that will incorporate the general part of the ordinance, the administration, and how things are intended to be interpreted, and how the different regulations are applicable to different things, are enabling legislation, things like that. The next drafts that we're going to be looking at will be regarding the requirements for permits and applications, more kind of housekeeping types of things, how this ordinance should be run, and then finally, nonconformities. So that is, we are in the first work session of that one, which is the Phase One, General and Administration. Following that, we're going to be doing Phase Two, which is more of the community design, lighting, streetscaping, signs of parking and entrance corridors. Phase Three will be setbacks, the building heights, stepbacks, the actual form of the different districts, and the types of uses will be in Phase Four, along with performance standards for those uses, what we have right now in our ordinance under supplementary regulations, which is how different uses are intended to be regulated, different housing type regulations, and looking at rural area uses. So that's obviously going to be a big lift phase. And then finally, Phase Five, compilation and adoption, so no new drafts, just all of the drafts all at once. I did want to give a brief callback to what we're looking at for our public engagement on these different phases, because as we're working through this, we're also working with the comprehensive plan. Other staff are running that project, and these two projects are run simultaneously on separate but somewhat converging tracks. So we are really working to get community engagement at the right time for each different phase on each different topic. So this first phase, we originally started out with focus groups, including, which I'm sure the planning commissioners will remember, interviews with the planning commissioners, interviews with staff, and then interviews with cadre, well, local development community group, since those are the groups that are using the first few phases, the first few articles of the ordinance most commonly. We also had a media launch release, a couple of email blasts went out. We had an open house to the general public to explain the project and then get a little more feedback and get people to understand what we're going to be looking at, what they should expect down the road, and in what situations they will be asked to participate to make their voice heard in the future. So additionally, I had my own television debut a little over a month ago on NBC 29. So we're going to be doing some more of that. As we go further along on the phases, we have more targeted engagement planned. We have design focus groups. We're going to have community groups that are going to be more for the businesses and then more for the residents, because each different aspect of the ordinance is targeted more towards the users of that section of the ordinance. We're also going to have multiple public surveys. We're going to have review forums for all the sections that have more to do with public input, design surveys, things that people are already trying to talk to us about, and we really want to hear them, we just need to hear them when we're in Phase Two, Three, and Four. We are also going to be setting up a subcommittee group with staff members, planning commissioners, and a board member to try to find a champion for this, that we can translate things more easily as we're moving forward and have an easier time of communicating and getting back and forth between staff and the elected officials. So finally, we will have, obviously, public hearings, and everything will go under municipal and legal review to make sure everything is crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is, and then we will launch, and we'll have a very large media release at that point. We want everyone to understand what's going on, and we don't want them to be confused. And so along with that, we are working with the Community and Public Engagement Office. We are sharing information through their Albion Talks podcast. We have a couple of those planned, and then we also have email and social media releases that are going out to the public, and will be going out to general surveys. And of course, we also have a website at engage.algbion.org, which is our project website, and that's just being periodically updated throughout the entire project. So right now, we are at the March 2023 work session quote "two," even though we've had multiple work sessions, this is the second one on this phase of the project. And as we're working forward, I have actually removed some of the dates on this timeline, which we've all seen before, because a lot of the things that we're working on from here on out are going to be dependent on working with the comprehensive plan. So they've had a couple of timeline setbacks and project scope creep, the way that we always do in Albion County, and so we're going to be working with them to figure out the timeline for that, but the course is pretty predetermined. We're pretty scoped on that, we're just not sure when we're going to get there. So now I can go ahead and hand it over to Rebecca, who will be going into our actual article content.
We have a couple of questions.
So I'm wondering if at all we could see whether it would be appropriate to have some conversations with at least four different developers who can be for us with their projects. And the most obvious one would be Greystoke. And then there was the group from the G M H, who decided to do that project with John Warner and Claire, but I think because of the way they were embraced in the community, they decided to stop that project with somebody else. And then the group on Lyle Road, who are doing a big project next to the Rehabilitation Center, Nursing and Rehabilitation Center, and then the group on Route 29 near Holliday. So what I've done there is those five organizations are not the local boys and girls. And my sense is, is that the local boys and girls are going to engage with you as the local staff in ways that are intimately benefit them. And I think, given what we're looking at and given some of the projects that could possibly come to the county, that it would be helpful to have big organizations and national, or at least big regional organizations, to tell you what their experience was. These are our zone, and I am very careful. I am not trying to disparage the local boys and girls, but I'm just thinking that the way to give you different kinds of insights about our zone, and those are folks who will want to put significant budget dollars to make their projects move.
Thing I like about that, too, is it's tied to economic development in a sense, right?
Yeah, definitely. I think we could definitely reach out to them.
At some point. I'm not, I don't expect you to tell me when you might do it, I'm just suggesting that as you're, because I think being able to say that in your narrative at a point, that in fact you did engage with Claire, with these types of developers, that that would only help, that would strengthen, I think, your hand as you talk, as you have some of those conversations.
It is similar, babe. When I saw on the list, and this might be a question for the consultants, but it has to do with engagement, so the lighting, you had lighting ordinance. You know, years ago, this planning commission offered to host roundtables with experts, not slow looks, but experts in lighting, design, the technology has changed. Margaret with planning, there had been a half draft of an update to the lighting ordinance that God stopped, it's like, oh no, you know, we don't have time for that, do something else, you know, the way things happen as priorities change. But there's substantive expertise involved in that, and there's substantive expertise locally, as well as some other folks who had volunteered to provide their expertise. And so I'm suggesting, and they've been writing to the county diligently every couple of months.
Dark Sky.
Yes, yeah. So I think that we should consider tapping some of that expertise that has been offered up to us, and, you know, just caution that perhaps our ordinance needs a little more tweaking than you may realize. So I'd be happy to dig out the list of people from the past who had offered their free consulting to the county on this topic and had been rebuffed because the board didn't find it in the priority list of the work plan for the last six years now. So nevertheless, I just wanted to offer that up. I can send a follow-up email, but I don't want us to just kind of run right over the fact that there's been this hue and cry for helping the county modernize its ordinance in that particular vein. And it's fine if the consultants want to say, we're experts in lighting ordinances, and, you know, to share that with them. I don't really have a big opinion on how it happens, but we should honor that. That's it.
I'll follow up with you on getting those contacts.
This is a mission, there's the Department of Astronomy.
Yeah, that's some of the retired professors, Meredith and others from the, offered their
Just have a couple of quick comments or questions. One is historic resources. Maybe this isn't the best time to talk about this, you can just tell me to shelve it, but just thinking about how historic resources and climate and sustainability are woven into the rezoning process, the rezoning document process, where they fall, how they're integrated into it, just two gaps that I know we're working on, I'm just curious how they're built into that.
Some of that is going to depend on direction from the comprehensive plan, and so that's why some of these phases, depending on where the comprehensive plan is and what stage that's in, some of these phases may have to pause a little bit or do gather research that we can while we're waiting to hear some of those things. And then in terms of incorporating some of that, that comes through use standards is one of the first things that comes to mind when you're talking about uses and the impacts that those have. And so we'll have to have, you know, a mindset and an eye to those types of things when we're writing those use standards when we get to that phase.
Got it. Thank you. And then a really simple question, can we get a copy of this presentation?
Great. I'll follow up with a question, Missile. As we were talking a little bit about this yesterday, I would also ask about equity in there, and those are like the two canons of the board supervisor's vision, so maybe that's for another time, or maybe it's, I thought it might be in general, general provisions, or we'll get to that point, where it says at the very beginning, the purpose of this document is boom, 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 talks about affordable housing and so forth, that's just a question we can plant for later. Will there be like a high level overview of kind of what you've learned in the public engagement of Phase One? And you might have shared that, I just can't remember, so maybe that's woven into today's presentation as well?
It is not. We talked about that a little bit last time in terms of our conversations with Cadre and the conversations that we had with each of you. The one thing that we haven't brought back to you is what we heard from the open house, but we can give you a summary of that and send it out.
Yeah, that'd be great. Whenever we get together, I know you've always, have always and always shared something you have, but we're getting older, and a lot of times we can't remember, it's months in between meetings. Sometimes it's hard to remember all those little.
And multiple projects, so, you know, it's like, did you tell me that, or did somebody else tell me that?
So just like high level overviews to start would always be helpful. And then the last piece is, I think I know the answer, you started touching on it, but it looks like it's rigid phases, right? Phase One, Phase Two, we're going to do these things accordingly, but will there be moments where we're required to flex in between phases, right, where there's something at Phase Two that could impact Three or vice versa? Would that, would we expect to see that, or is it really going to be as rigid as what's on that slide there?
So somewhat rigid, but we can't be too rigid, right? Because the parts of your ordinance have to speak to each other and not conflict with one another, or not have gaps and holes and those types of things. So there will be times, though, that you might bring up things, and I say, we're going to get to that later, and I'm going to make a note of it, and I'm going to make sure when we get to that later, I say, you know, hey, this is the time you brought up this concern, let's talk about that now. So there will be times like that where I say, we've got to put a pin on this, that's going to be discussion six months down the road. But there will be times maybe where we say, hey, that's a little bit different than what we discussed before, and what you're talking about now is going to change what we talked about previously, are we going to go back and change that? What do you, you know, want to do? And so there will be some of that, and, yeah, we do need to be somewhat flexible, but stay on target and stay on task at the same time.
That makes sense.
One more quick question. So as part of this process, how are you or are you considering the boundaries in terms of relationships to the outside edge, right, all of our neighbors, but also internal, the city where we have common boundaries and sometimes sort of determine where those boundaries are? How are you communicating or engaging with the city as they redo their rezoning?
So I am on the city email list, and I am keeping up with what's going on. I've been looking at what they're putting out in terms of their ordinance.
Yeah.
As just kind of a first step of seeing, and then when we get closer to those instances and we're looking at the map and seeing where things bleed over, we will have conversations as needed about that.
Great, thank you.
Good luck in the city.
Yeah.
So let me follow up. You are in fact going to be, after, yeah. So part of that is an inquiry, but I would not want to go to tacit acceptance. Okay, so just because the city has a zone that's contiguous to one of our zones, I would not say a priori that we should have shared zones. I mean, we should not have common zones, I should say.
It's a piece of the puzzle that needs to be considered.
I'm much better about that. And the reason I'm saying this, so everybody doesn't think that I'm just sort of being cranky, is that I would not, as in any kind of affair, since we were not involved in that affair.
Yeah.
I'm not going to adopt that, because I have some, I am cautious about their process.
It's helpful, I didn't take it that way. I, I mean, I didn't assume that when they said we would look at what the city is doing, that we would be trying to make everything we're doing compatible on our boundary with it. Nothing we don't care about being compatible, but just to be aware.
That's different.
Yeah, I just thought we'd be looking for dental conflicts or concerns or whatever.
All right, are we ready to dive into what's been drafted?
Just dive.
Okay.
Dive, dive. Set the bell down.
So you got this, and hopefully you opened it up and started reading, was like, man, this is easy, because this is the two easiest articles of the ordinance.
Well, I was looking for where the catch was, I have to admit. I was like, where's the extra attachment that's really hard?
Right, so no, this is, this is the baby step into this, the warm-up, so to speak. A lot of this is just largely, it's going to come from Code of Virginia. There's not a lot of policy decisions to make here, but I do want to walk through it, make sure you're comfortable with how it's written, and talk about any changes that you might have. So in terms of Article One, it includes the enactment and authority, it includes your ordinance conflicts and interpretations, it establishes the zoning district map and how that gets interpreted, as well as provides the transition of regulations after adoption. So how are things going to shift from the existing ordinance to the new ordinance, providing effective date vested rights and some other things there as well? Make sure I don't forget. So then in terms of just our drafting process, how we came up with what we did, first and foremost, we're looking at Code of Virginia requirements, making sure it's meeting those things, establishing that authority, giving the references, where we can give references, and just then generally reorganizing, this is a lot of your existing text, and we've just reorganized it, we've simplified the text where we could, we have added some additional detail where we thought there needed to be additional detail, and then we have sent it to staff and gotten their edits and incorporated those things. When I mentioned staff, I'm talking about Leah, I'm talking about Amelia, other staff, as well as your county attorney, has reviewed and kind of given some preliminary thoughts and requests for changes. There will still be an official county attorney review as well before this gets adopted.
And our council, the PC's council, is intimately involved in that.
Yes. All right, so I'm going to run through just a few of kind of the highlights, revisions to note, and then I'll pause at the end of that so that we can discuss Article One and anything that I have. So Section 1.2.1 contains a lot of new text. Just to clarify, give greater detail, this is about the interpretation of the ordinance. We edit text about conflicting regulations and about the more restrictive governing. We also, as advised by staff, added a statement, though, that says, you know, we're not enforcing easements, we're not enforcing standard three or subdivisions and things like that, but if it's more restrictive, you do have to follow those things. We also gave the zoning administrator clear responsibility to interpret the intent and purpose of the ordinance as well as the zoning map. And then for Section 1.3.1, very similar to your current ordinance, but we clarified that the official map is a GIS layer. We've added text from Code of Virginia about filing a copy with Circuit Court. This is something we're continuing to look at and talk to staff about, because it seems like it's sort of an old regulation, you know, before GIS and that sort of thing, because, you know, how is Circuit Court going to keep the GIS also with your frequency of changes and those types of things? But it is state code, so we've got it in there for now, and we'll see if that might adjust later. Section 1.3.3, we've added subsection six about the uncertainty regarding the map, and if there's uncertainties, the zoning administrator has the authority to interpret and decide what that map is saying, and if there is disagreement about that, that can be appealed to the BCA. So all of that is clarified in this Article One. And then Division 1.4, the transition of regulations after adoption. We've added existing ordinance language here, but added and revised the division to clarify what happens with the completed applications or applications that have been approved, same thing for permits, I'm just adding clarity there, as well as any outstanding violations, what happens with those when the guard changes, so to speak. And then Section 1.4.6 is vested rights, just clarifying, including reference to Virginia code here. So very simple, basic things I've highlighted there. I want to ask you all, though, a couple of things, and that is, one, did you find it easy to read and interpret, and not just for yourselves, because you're used to this sort of thing, right, but in the mindset of someone else who's less familiar with this topic? Was it easy to understand? Do you have any edits where there are parts that you thought, yeah, this isn't quite clear? I will say, if you did notice typos or grammar things, just shoot those to staff, we don't have to talk about them, we'll incorporate those if you see any. And then another question is, did we miss anything from your existing ordinance? If there's something from your existing ordinance that you are aware of, that you feel like fits within this Article One and we've missed it, please let us know, and we can take a look at that and see if that needs to be incorporated. So along those lines, were there any comments? See a shake no?
I have questions. I will say, I will say in reading it, I thought Section 1.4.4 felt like a small print and a contract. In fact, I went back and read it twice, and this is actually the world that I live quite comfortably in, what I live like. Whoa. So I went from 1.4.4. So I went from 1.4.4 from A through E. It's like, oh, this could just have some plain language in this stuff. This is feeling really tense. And so, and I, and I went back, so I was reading it later in the, in the afternoon. I went back the next morning and read it again, thinking it was just, you know, I was just probably at the end of my, I don't have any comprehension for this. I said, nah, there's some wordsmithing that could take place. But I think.
That's the complete applications.
Yes, the one, yeah, yeah. Because really what you're saying, you're really saying you have to touch all these various spaces before the application is considered ready to be moved on. And you have to do this in this way, and then if you do this in this way, and if you have to do it in this way. And it was something like, you're right, all of that's right. But I have a feeling you're gonna get a couple of questions in there, and then I have some questions. As you go back to the beginning, that's just sort of some context questions.
Did anyone else have any, anything related to the text that they would like us to revisit in terms of wordsmithing or?
And it may be, it may be that it needs to be that way. So I'm not saying that it needs to be, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, it's just when I, when I read everything up until that point, it flowed quickly. And I got to that point, it's like, oh, I have to pay attention to my reading.
Yes, and when I do editing for a living, I was editing a book right before I got here. You know, yes, it could be used in more plain language, but I hesitated to touch any of it because the staff will tell you I'm very late. This little word needs to be changed. But I don't know all the legal ins and outs and variances and such forth and I didn't, I didn't feel like I could start marking that out and make, because it could be much plainer, plain straightforward English, less passive voice, but.
I'll throw in a thought, you know, we don't have a lot of opportunities to, to do this. So I'm really grateful that you guys are diving in and doing a great job. The, the lens that I tried to look through this with different lenses, one of them was as an applicant, right? So my sense and, and asked myself the question, who's the audience? So the questions I asked are who, when, and why would you be looking at Article One general provisions? I've been doing business in this county for thirty-five years or so. I don't think I've ever read the general provision section. There's maybe good reason for that, or maybe I should have.
Now you know.
Might explain a lot, right? So, but my general takeaway was, and it sounds similar to what Karen was saying, is I was going through these and I started to say, really, it's super JSON and sub JSON are those words that you, things that you could typically. And then I was like, well, how much of that do we have to have in this document? And I was reluctant, hesitant to change any wordsmith, do any wordsmithing. But I would just encourage you to look through, if you've already done that, but just thinking about those types of things.
Excuse me, I'll just say these comments are helpful because part of this that we're trying to figure out is how much of what you have now, do you like and you want to keep?
Yeah.
And how much are you ready to totally revamp? And what I'm hearing, the, the portions that, that each of you have pointed out are things that are in your existing.
Yeah.
That I kind of looked at and I thought, well, maybe this is what they like, maybe this is what they want. And so now I can say.
Indubitably, we love to speak in long winded sentences, herefore wind.
Well, here's, here's another, yeah, here's another example. I know you said you'll point out typos, this is not a typo, this is just a.
Yeah.
The zoning map will be available for examination and inspection by the public at all reasonable times and may be accessed in the community development department. Feels a lot like, it's a lot of words, right? Like, it could be, the community development department will house the zoning map. You know, it's very, so simplifying those kinds of things. The other thing that I've always loved are such checklists. And I, when I got to Section 1.4.4, I started thinking, could you make a checklist out of this? Is there a way to sort of simplify? When you have a task, how do you then just go boom, 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 boom? And it ties back to the legal needs, but it's a little bit more straightforward. I think that was, those were kind of the big questions.
Questions?
Questions. So if I were, you know, if I, if I were in sort of a litigious mood, one of the things that I would sort of come to us and say, under 1.1.3, three, that the zoning is just to facilitate creating a convenient, attractive and harmonious community. And I went, what the heck is that? And who's, did you say? And whose standard, whose standard are we using for that? Now, I recognize that that comes out of the purpose of zoning ordinances. Because I went, because as soon as I saw that, I went to the code and said, oh, this is actually in the code. And then I started thinking, hmm, who does the code?
Yeah.
And so then I started getting this like, now I'm starting to get into this posture as I'm reading this, it's like. I'm getting into one of those postures as I'm reading it. So I said, well, you know, stop, let's ask. Because there's a number of these, there's a number of statements like that. What I, what I would say, the declarative statement that this is the, um, this is the type of community in which we want to live. That I, I recognize some of it's in the code, but also the recognition is none of it's been vetted by any. So it's become sort of this, it's become sort of this embedded history about who we are as a place that I don't know that necessarily has evolved over time. And so I just, I use, I use one, I use that. For instance, what you did when the one through thirteen, you did them in a different order than what's in the ordinance. I was just gonna ask you, was that on purpose? Or, or is there some ranking to the way we're putting them in? That we would be looking at in Section 1.1.3? And I don't have, you know, that's fine. I just noticed when I was reading it, oh, this is different than the purposes zoning ordinances in fifteen point two. Wow, I love studying this, fifteen point two dash, dash twenty-two eighty-three.
Mr. uh, Commissioner Bivens, if I could address that. You actually, you actually hit on where this came from, that, that proposed Section 1.1.3 mirrors fifteen point two dash twenty-two eighty-three.
It does, exactly. But the order of, the order of what we have there is not the same as the order in the ordinance, which is fine. And just was wondering if that was intentional or, you know, did we intentionally do that, which is fine. Just declare it and I'll move on. But that was, it's just, it's those kinds of things in there. And I'll say there's some other bits in there, but I'll be quiet for one point one. I think, yeah, I'll be quiet for the rest because somebody else may have some.
So to answer that question, it's not in any particular order, it is just mimicking twenty-two eighty-three. It's probably in a different order just because we grabbed some, you know, from existing.
Got it.
Added in, you know, what was missing at the bottom.
I'm pretty sure it's just mirroring what you have right now. I, I, I think it's just a copy and paste from your, your current ordinance.
That's all I wanted to know.
It's Section 1.4 of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, our zoning ordinance, our, our, our online thing is not easy for me. I'm gonna need a train, I'm gonna come and get trained because I couldn't, I can never find anything like.
No, I can't find anything. This is where I mentioned earlier about weaving into two vision statements from the board around, I guess it was climate and equity. Feels like it, it should be woven in there. Yeah. And this is just a copy and paste from the codes section that maybe you don't get into that, I don't know. But feeling is always dangerous, you sort of have a list that always feels dangerous to me. So maybe it's, it's intended to do these things, but this is like, there's other things that could be done as well, right? So it's not limited to these things. Maybe that's wordsmithing, but I feel this list could easily be twenty-five things and not thirteen.
Yep.
So, so, so you're saying like under ten, versus promoting creating preserving affordable housing suitable for meeting the current features of the community of the county. Um, that, that's where there could be some shaping of language. Because it's the one piece of just, and then there's a piece about, well, we kind of say, where we talk about preserving groundwater and number thirteen, which that could have a bit more in, in, in it that might expand on. If we're allowed to do that.
Yeah, the question I would pose is, you know, since we know that these thirteen things are from state code, do you want to start branching beyond that? Because as you just mentioned, the list could go on, right? So how do you decide? These are the extra things that we value and we think are important enough to add in here versus something that's not.
Yeah, I, I would say, and this is just one thought, I would say it should tie back to our comp plan. So if there are specific goals or aspirations that come out of the comp plan, they should somehow link back here.
To the zoning ordinance.
And, and that was gonna be my response too, when you mentioned about, you know, attractive, harmonious community. That to me is in your comp plan.
Yeah.
What does your comp plan say you want your community to look like?
I thought you were gonna say that, that if that's the language, then what I would see. I, because I believe you should be able to do crosswalks with complaints as well. But there's, I have seen nothing in our comp plan that speaks to that. I've seen a lot of stuff in our comp plan that sort of hints at the kind of community you want. But I would have a hard time taking our comp plan and saying, oh, yeah, that's how we're gonna get a, our comp plan is gonna get a, a convenient, attractive and harmonious community. I think that's the, and maybe, and maybe that's the preamble in the comp plan.
Yeah.
That, how you do that, as you do, you do a preamble in the, in the comp plan, that then points to those kinds of things. Which would also point to what you're, which we have a lot more latitude in how we, how we craft that language in the comp plan.
Yeah, one is aspirational and then the other is functional.
Is operational.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bivens, if I could just add, I, I, I hear what you're saying and I do agree wholeheartedly that proposals as they come before the commission should be evaluated against the comprehensive plan. I would be hesitant to stray too far away from the purposes articulated in fifteen point two dash twenty-two eighty-three.
I get that, I get that. Because it, it needs to clearly tie back to.
Be, because this is, this is what the state has enabled localities to do. These are the enabled purposes of zoning ordinances and localities. And to the extent that Almaral says the purpose of our locale, of our zoning ordinance differs from what the state has enabled.
Yes.
I think we need to.
That's problematic, that's problematic.
I think we need to stay with what the state has enabled.
But I'm sorry, just to continue that. So to sum clear, so we could add to it, but we have to make sure the content is.
I, I would not suggest adding to it.
We would not. So things like climate or historical resources or equity, those types of things.
I, I think those considerations can come into the, to the planning commission's analysis as it evaluates individual applications. I don't think that that's specifically enabled as a purpose of a zoning ordinance under state law.
Thank you.
I mean, I, 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 I think, I'm sorry, I think that all of those considerations can probably fit within one of the thirteen enabled purposes.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, like the comp plan goes in a lot more depth on all of these topics.
I, I, I think that that evaluation already comes within the thirteen enabled purposes. Maybe not, maybe not in as many words, but I think that it already fits in and ties in. And that's why it's appropriate for the planning commission to make those evaluations.
Yes, understood. So if there is one in here, say number nine, it talks about us approach slips, that's something different. Yeah, sure, something like that talks about significance for the protection of the natural environment relates it back to preserving agriculture from forest lands. Would it be appropriate to add in there something that expands that scope beyond just ag and forest lands? And says other lands of significance?
I, I would suggest sticking with the, with the wording, however much, however awkward it may seem to you in the state law. I would suggest, I mean, Commissioner Bivens brought up a number three to facilitate the creation of convenient, attractive and harmonious community.
Yeah.
You know, as kind of old timey as that language sound, I think, I think that our comprehensive plan fits in that. Our comprehensive plan is designed to facilitate the creation of a convenient, attractive and harmonious community.
When we're embarking upon zoning or rezoning, the first thing we do is to look at the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
So we have that expanded language. Because I've read a lot of these, I thought, there's a lot, even historic resources, there's a lot more about that.
That's very helpful, thanks. My question is answered.
So councilors, if you're to say we shouldn't really be touching this section, it's tied so closely to code, then.
My only suggestion would be that we reorder it in the same order as it exists in the state law. Or, or alternatively, just cross-reference state law that the purposes of the Almaral County zoning ordinance shall be as set forth in Virginia code fifteen point two dash twenty-two eighty-three. And call it a day in terms of the purposes section of the local zoning ordinance.
How about the, the entire article, I guess is where I'm going, like, I feel like this is very tied to code.
Yes.
So we shouldn't even be touching it, right?
Um, there may be areas that we can, but, but for the most part, when in doubt, it's best to adhere as closely to the state code as, as possible.
I just wanna save us time, that's the thing, if we're throwing out comments that council's like, why are we even touching that, then?
Shut me.
Yeah.
We are more constrained by state law than, we're not, we're not at liberty to just freelance and make this a declaration of, of what we may think, so.
Understood, thank you.
I have one question, if I could ask. The zoning map in its digital form of the zoning map, I'm sorry, one point three, section one point three point one. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I thought we were just kind of. I'm curious. It references the, the zoning map adopted on December tenth nineteen eighty as amended by all zoning map amendments after that date. Curious, why, why does it do that? Why, why not just say the current zoning map is the? Is there a point where you ever reset, hit the reset button?
Nineteen eighty.
There never another reset or?
Nope, not, not a hard reset since then.
That was when we established the rural area.
Oh, I see.
And that was when we, that's a lot of our regulations since then has been tied to that. So that was a big change and that was when they did a massive rezoning, a forced rezoning of a lot of different properties across the county.
Interesting, yeah.
So that was.
That's the most recent comprehensive rezoning.
So then every time we do a ZMA, that's just an A, that's just an A. Of course, it's an A, we're remanding nineteen eighty.
Well, which reflects the question. You know, during this comprehensive plan process, we may have significant revisions that we want to make. And it may end up being reset in, in some ways. Yeah, I, I just wasn't sure.
That's very helpful, Frank.
Can I just ask, as a reference back to your la, previous conversation of about just referencing state code? If, when possible, do you guys prefer us to do less text and instead of just listing out lists like that, just say, as, as shown in twenty-two eighty-three? Do you prefer that or do you prefer more text than having those? In, inclusion, being able to see exactly what that section of state code that we're referencing says? I think that's just a general question just across the, the way.
So. I, I would say go ahead and reference state code, but since a lot of these are published as PDFs, it's just, just a recommendation, if you could have them likeable so people can click them and see the relevant piece of state code.
For, for what it's worth, the drafting preference in our office is just do the cross-reference. And we do have the ability on the online code to cross-reference the state code so that users can just click on the county code and it will, it is designed to allow them to, to jump over to the relevant state code section.
I think that's pretty vital. I couldn't imagine, think about the audience, right? I'm not gonna go stop and go do a Google for state code section.
Clicking to the different state codes.
So I think that part is pretty vital.
Personally, I think it's kind of like you're walking a fine line, right? It's like, I, I don't think it should all be just state code references. It's like, well, you could just say at the very beginning, it's state code. But I think what you, what you're doing here is, is helpful to the audience. I think this is intended for. In that it gives you sort of a high level snippet and if you want some more detail, you can go and find it here.
Great, thank you. That's fantastic feedback, appreciate it.
Any other questions before I move to Article Two?
Yep, Commissioner Bivens, go ahead.
So I'm just, so is there a tension under one point two point one, three and four? Where it says, when regulations of the ordinance conflict with each other, other county ordinance or commonwealth or federal law, the more restrictive regulations will govern. And how do we, so, and then above that, it says, this, uh, the standards of this ordinance are the minimum required. So this is the minimum required, but yet if they're in conflict, the more, the more restrictive. So you go, you hit it up or not? And I just, I just wondered, why don't we just say, you know, that? I just, and I, because I couldn't see any code to this one. Why not just say that, you know, if there's a code that's more restrictive than this, then that's the one. To, to put those two, to put two and three, yeah. Yeah. If there's a way to do that language on that, and maybe there isn't, but that, so that's, that's fine. But that, I'm just giving you these things, I'm not saying they don't have to. And then if I could go over to five in that same section where it says. in that same section where it says a building structure in use, which was not legally existing on X day, when this gets revised, may not be made lawful solely by adoption of this. So this is that whole non-conformity. Okay. And so later on, and thank you for putting a must in section point three three, it says districts must be, as opposed to shall be. So, here's, if you can give me, and I'm looking towards the back of the room here. Um, so this is the zoning, the book, this is a one point three, one point three point three seven. It's the appeal process on the BZM. So the BZM does not have the power to change substantially the locations or the district boundaries. So that to me is saying that they are not looking at zoning map amendments. They can look at zoning text amendments. Because zoning map amendments changes, can change district boundaries. Or then what's the, what's, or then, or then what is substantially defined as?
So if I could address that, so this is just declarative of existing law. The Board of Zoning Appeals has the ability to hear appeals of interpret, the zoning administrators' interpretations of district boundaries. These Board of Zoning Appeals does not have the power to change the boundaries. It just has the ability to interpret the boundaries as they currently exist, or it has a role in that process.
Has a role in that process, because it does have the ability to review a ZMA.
No, it has, it has the ability, if there's a, if there's an ambiguity regarding the location of a district boundary, it has some role in settling that ambiguity.
I like the ambiguity.
It does not have the ability to, to change wholesale. And that's, I think, what, what this is getting at, it's just declarative of existing law.
Okay. That makes, thank you, that makes sense.
That's one more question, it's kind of a obtuse question, but I'm curious. I'm looking at one point three one D, talks about the zoning mapping available for examination and inspection. And I'm curious how maybe like other localities, like if I was visually impaired, how would I have access to the information? I know it's a strange question, but as, as we're talking about inclusivity and equity, I'm just curious, like what are other localities doing? It could be right now, the answer is you would have to bring someone who isn't visually impaired with you to help you interpret it. But is there any technologies or anything like that that's helping with that?
Well, that's a fantastic question, thank you. We, we actually had somewhat of a conversation about this. And state code does, uh, is a bit ambiguous about, um, what does and does not need to be kept at the county as, as far as zoning map is required. Um, and it's, it's still kind of up in the air at the moment. Um, I'm not sure that there's any technology outside of a secretary or staff or somebody looking at the map and, and helping, um, the public with that. Um, it's a great question though. But for our purposes, we wanna know what is required for the county to do. Um, and I think that this covers any, any sort of ambiguity. This is saying that if, if you need to, you can go to the Office of Community Development and they'll print you out a map.
And there are, um, online sources, you know, that, that read things and describe things that are, you know, for visually impaired. So that type of thing can be utilized on your website, probably already is.
Yes, another question. This is generous for our council. For you too, I'm gonna look here, I'm looking for. So on one point four six A, it talks about vested rights.
Was it section A, I'm sorry?
One point four point six A, it talks about vested rights. So the ordinance says that if you have something that's vested for fifteen years, non-conforming actions for fifteen years, that you've been doing the right things, paying your, paying your taxes, keeping it clean, not going to see, not getting in, instead of going before the zoning administrator because you're getting ratted out. You have this vested right, once we put this new piece in. The question I have, and I'm sure you hear this from supervisors, is a, is an SP a vested right? So if I come through the process or as an applicant and I get, I get a, um, I get a, um, an SP, which has some value to it clearly, and I do nothing with it. And it changed, the ordinance changes. And they have changed kind of what I might be able to do on this piece of property. Am I going to do it as of when it happened? Or do, since I haven't done anything except for come before this planning commission and supervisors, do I have to come back?
Are you ready for a good lawyerly answer?
No, I am.
It depends.
I knew you were gonna say it, I knew you were gonna say it.
Um, vested rights are a case-specific determination. And the, the one example that you provided of fifteen years paying your taxes, that's only one basis of a vested right. There has to be, uh, uh, in the scenario that you, that you said about going, getting an approval with a special use permit and so forth, and then not doing anything with it. One of the basic principles of having a vested right is that it requires a significant affirmative governmental act. And then it also requires diligence on the part of the applicant and actually following it up.
Okay.
So it's very, it's a very case-specific determination. And this is basically just saying that don't count on the zoning law or the zoning ordinance as the, as the final arbiter of a vested right. That's gonna be a case-specific determination.
So, but this, this gets to sort of the question that I have, just making some of this from the practical. Let's say that the county revises its, its water protection ordinance, uh, to clarify the hundred foot buffers required on streams. And we've already approved projects that have not really, you know, we approved projects that have gone halfway through the process. And they don't have that hundred foot buffer. At what point would they, or, or would they be required to put that buffer in?
And again, that, that is also a fact-specific determination in terms of how much have they relied on that? How much have they, have they, um, detrimentally relied on?
They relied on making investments and doing those things.
Yeah, um, that is actually addressed in section one point four point four. That's that section.
Okay, one point four point five. It's basically saying that anything that was approved prior to the adoption of this new ordinance
Yes.
is gonna continue to be allowed under the old ordinance. Means you're, you've already approved it.
It's just when we start talking about vested rights, it's sort of like, okay, there's a piece on that, because you know, in, in the abstract of it, I could sell my right. Which happens all the time. So I could, I could, cause it's, it's a tangible, I could sell my right. And so if I sell my right, am I also selling the fact that I've just, I've just sort of buffered it from the county to be able to come and do something with it? And so.
But theoretically, the, the, the prior approval affects the market value of the property. And I think that's what you're getting at. And then that's what, that's, that's why courts also protect vested rights, is because they realize that they have a financial value to the owners of the property.
Okay, good. I'm just wrestling, you know, I'm asking you to consider.
But this gets.
Thank you, Bishop.
I think this gets to a point that has been sort of raised before, is that I think there are some approvals that should have time limits on it. And I believe there is a reference to, to time limits here. I have seen situations, um, I don't know about Almaral and Schrodsville, where there have been projects on the books for almost a hundred years, they've come back. And they don't comply with any, um, modern ordinances. Um, and everyone agrees that they're a terrible idea, but they're like, ah, decision was made a hundred years ago, what are we gonna do? I don't think we wanna be in that situation. I think there's a certain period at which you say, listen, you need to come back and make this compliant with our, our ordinances.
I think, I mean, I will share with you that I think there's been some conversation above us about going to the people in Richmond to see, but right now, if they, right now, we don't have that ability locally. That has to be given to us by the people that it's a.
I mean, is that.
That, that's correct, that's correct. That, 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 what, the way you suggest, Commissioner Murray, is beyond local control. That a lot of that is governed by state law or common law. It is, is beyond our ability to, to alter in the zoning ordinance.
Now, but, but, but our supervisors have had discussion about putting that as part of their legislative package. But that's not our pay grade, that's their pay grade. But you can talk to your supervisor.
Article one up enough for you?
I think so, if you guys are happy, then I'm ready to move to Article Two.
You think you got what you need in terms of commentary?
Yes, we have some good direction that I think we can apply holistically moving forward as well. All right. Article Two is administration. Um, this contains the zoning administrators' powers, duties, planning commission, Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, it talks about enforcement, the authority, what happens with violations, penalties, those types of things. Um, talks about fees and then taxes and expenses being paid prior to making applications. And again, this one is based on Code of Virginia. So not a lot of tweaking and changing that can happen. We tried to make sure it is following Code of Virginia um, and not deviating from that. We used your existing ordinance, we've added Code of Virginia references, organized it, streamlined it, just trying to make it user-friendly. Um, and then again, staff has reviewed and we have incorporated those edits. Um, one thing that we have done in this article, which we've talked about a little bit and we can, um, continue to discuss and feel that out as we move forward, is in terms of how much of the code to include. What we did in this section, you'll notice as I go through it, is a, a lot of times there's references when it's related to, um, staff and, and staff requirements, it's just, uh, references. If it's something that maybe applies more to the public and the public needs to be more informed about, we do give a little more detail so that they aren't chasing down state code and trying to interpret state code and they can read it in a little more plain English here. So that's kind of what we've tried to do, um, but we'll certainly take your direction in terms of streamlining that even more in places that we can do that. So briefly, um, just some revisions to note for Article Two. There's section two point one point one, this is the powers for the zoning administrator. Um, we've added some additional powers related from Code of Virginia, such as making findings of fact and terminations. Uh, we know this is probably already done in practice, um, but just wanted to clarify it in the ordinance. Also allowing the zoning administrator to make reasonable administrative procedures necessary, um, for administering the ordinance. We've included that. And then in section two point two point one, we've added text referencing Code of Virginia um, as well as Almaral Chapter Two, Article Four, regarding the planning commission. So lots of localities, including yourself, have a separate section in your code that talks about the planning commission, how you all are appointed and all of that sort of stuff. We didn't want to repeat that here. Uh, but we did notice in terms of that code section, there's a few things that are, are a little bit missing from what's currently in code of Virginia, so we've included both. We've referenced Code of Virginia, we've referenced your code and, and left it at that very simple streamline, so we're not repeating things there. Then in two point three, um, text here about the Board of Zoning Appeals is mostly the same. We've just sort of reorganized, cleaned it up for, for ease of the reader. We've added section two point three point three, which is meetings and procedures, just to clearly outline, um, how the BZA meetings would operate and that type of thing. And then division two point four is related to ARB. And we've just made the text here similar to the BZA. So things are, you know, consistent and similar throughout. We've added the meetings and procedures section here as well. Then section two point five is enforcement. Um, we've created clear procedures for how violations and complaints are initiated. Again, thinking of, of the public and how those are penalized. Um, we did reduce text in terms of the, um, staff and what they are required to do. Um, because we don't want to kind of force you into something where you might end up legally in trouble if, if one of those dots is, is not dotted or eyes not dotted.
So a question about enforcement. In, in the case where the, the county is understaffed or doesn't have the, the department question doesn't have the money to enforce the ordinance, how does, how does that play out?
So there are lots of localities whose enforcement is simply complaint-based. They don't have staff riding around looking and, and writing tickets and summons and those types of things. It is complaint-based. And you, you know, get to those complaints and you field them, you know, the best that you are able.
Except for specific, um, aspects of our ordinance, signs of the right of way, homestays. Um, I think we're looking at this with similar aspects of, of property maintenance possibly. Um, we are also a complaint-based, uh, municipality. So, um, which is how we find out about things a year and a half after they've been operating illegally without a permit sometimes. So, someone finally complained. And now we're following up on it.
And, um, this section has been reviewed by county attorney. We've made adjustments based on that review. And then section two point six point one is fees and charges. We've removed all individual fees, um, and referenced a fee schedule, um, which we realize this is in progress, but we anticipate, you know, that it's going to be adopted and, and we can reference it here when that time comes. So that is the quick rundown of Article Two. So again, same questions for you. Were there areas that you had trouble interpreting? Do you feel like there are edits needed? Did we miss anything? And then here too, in terms of procedures, is there anything that we have misidentified or are missing related to, to procedures? Staff has reviewed, so hopefully we've caught all those things, but, um, do you all have anything related to Article Two?
I just had one thing. Sorry. Um, so, I guess, well, I think you answered one of them. That was answered. Thank you, good job. No, I just had one about the planning commission. I guess that's the one that you answered, which I understood your answer to. But I'm wondering if whoever reads this would also understand that. So there should be some kind of language I'm suggesting in the, as a, you know, kind of a preamble. This is why it doesn't have two pages of detail, because you can find the detail here. Unless that's already in there.
So you feel like the, so we have there, you know, it, it references Code of Virginia and then, um, chapter two, Article Four of the Almaral County Code.
So that's true, um, so does the Board of Zoning Appeals. So does the ARB. So it just feels like there's things like meetings and procedures is missing from the planning commission section. Why is that? Well, because it's located in this other. So I would say either put it in here or just make sure there's a clear reference back to.
Now, what Fred's saying is that there's a blurb about on each of the, on the, on the, on the BZA and on the ARB about what they are.
Yeah.
And this, and this is the slimmest piece about what they are. It could just be like two sentences, you know, the planning commissions, da, 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 da. Cause I did, I said, well, that, you know, being the planning commissioner, I just said, oh, what's this about? So we get like three, three paragraphs and everybody else has got like a page and a half. Yeah, I'm feeling slight, I wanna look at more words on this.
What's more word?
What's more words up on here?
Get you more words.
We'll get you some more. Don't worry about that.
Words upon this piece of paper.
Are they coming?
Mr. Mistle, would you think it would clarify if we had the same format for this, for the different, um, sections? So as we have sort of boarding appeals, we have appointment, term of membership, compensation or removal. And then we would just say, C section, uh, two point four of the Almaral County Code, and then next have powers and duties.
Yeah.
C section, okay.
And I guess, I guess, I'm sure you have a good reason. I'm not sure why you're doing that, just for the planning commission and not for the others. Because this to me is a really great, quick sort of primer on all of these groups. And to leave one out and cause me to have to go to another, it just seems like it'd be.
It's the truth of the saying.
I would change it.
And, and we can, um, split those back out so that it aligns the way the others are aligned in terms of multiple sections. I would not want to. I would not want to repeat the details.
Sure. No, I agree.
I just want to make sure.
It's like the Cliff Notes. It's the Cliff Notes for all these groups.
I think the BZA doesn't have its own section under Chapter Two.
Well, it doesn't.
No.
In a way, the planning commission is more important because it, it, unlike the other bodies.
Don't start.
Unlike the other bodies, it does have its own article in Chapter Two.
I'm sorry, Cal, could you repeat that?
I can't, can you say it up there?
The chapter that, that, that. The planning commission does have its own article in Chapter Two of the county code.
We know that, but we just wanted to say that he's been there. Can I ask a question? So I don't understand under two point one, two point one point one, I don't understand why seven is needed when A says, the zoning administrator is appointed by the one that has authority empowered by all of this. This is what they do there. So I don't know why then there we say the zoning, that, that there's a limitation on their authority. So you tell me the planning, you tell me the planning, the zoning administrator can do all of this. So don't then put a hint in my mind that, well, you know, if you ask the right question, we might be able to limit his or her authority. I didn't understand why seven is. Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at.
No, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
So, so at the, at the front bit where we talk about the appointments, the appointment, power and duties of the zoning administrator.
Right.
We lay out a whole bunch of stuff, which basically says, somebody in this room covers the waterfront. And then, and then we get down to seven and says, well, you know, even though we said everything above, nothing that was, nothing anywhere else constrains the, constrains, and it's just like, whoa.
Well, I.
I didn't think that anyhow.
As, as exhaustive or as, as lengthy as the items one through six were, I think what, what paragraph seven says is that this isn't an exhaustive list, that there may be other powers the zoning administrator has. Don't read numbers one through six as being.
As being, as fencing it in.
As being the sole grant. So if, in other words, if somebody.
I was more expansive. Okay, I see.
Exactly.
I see what you're saying.
That don't challenge the authority of the zoning administrator just because it didn't appear in one through six.
Okay, I, I understand because I was just saying, you're just basically giving the person the waterfront to work off of. So why would I even begin to think that there was a constraint?
It.
I see what you're doing.
It might seem like the waterfront, but there may be other powers.
I see what you're doing. Okay, I see what you're doing.
Me.
And so I will say that two point two point three G was about as complicated. I had the diagram. A non-legal staff member of the county applicant land over or land or landlord's agent, attorney or stepdaughter on the fourth day of spring may have ex parte communications with a member of the BZA prior to a hearing, but may not discuss the facts of hearing relative to whether or not you're coming over to have a moon pie with me on Tuesday to a particular case. However, all ex parte communications must comply. The requirements of Code of, I was just like, really?
Commissioner Evans, I think that is lifted almost verbatim from the state code.
Well, I know it is. Cause I went to the, I went to the court and read it and said, this really read all, it read well. Gee. It read so well up to that point and I stopped and said, huh?
We can, we can.
Well, no, you know what my question was? Why isn't there something like that for everybody? That's really what it is. Why can't nobody come and talk to us?
Well, that can be a rule of procedure. I mean, if the planning commission is seriously interested in such a rule, like.
No, that was just me being, you know, it was me being like, well, wait a minute. If we can do this with the BZA, why can't they, why can't we say, you can't come talk to us? And that would solve a lot of conversations on the telephone. Okay? And then, may I ask another question?
What were yours?
Two point four two. Demonstrated interest. That someone who goes on the ARB must have a demonstrated interest, competence or knowledge in architectural landscape, architecture, street design or all. Particularly when, this is about entrance corridors.
I took that as if you're applying for the position, you must have a demonstrated interest.
I know, which means you, but it's about entrance corridors, of which there's nothing about our entrance corridors that have any unifying. There are very few places in our entrance corridors that have a unifying approach to design.
I would say that, again, this is just my interpretation.
That's why I had that. I knew I was going to answer this question.
I would say that the, the way I have always envisioned this is, has been a basic understanding of the, of the design principles that apply to all the entrance corridors. And that would be things like pedestrian scale, density, massing, those kinds of things. As opposed to a specific architectural typology or. I go along with that.
There's nothing in here that says that I couldn't be Francois Wolfing.
Yeah, exactly.
And get, and get this wrong. I'm not trying to downplay.
Yeah.
He's, he's, he's a very expensive landscape architect. So that's my piece. It's like, you know, there are these codes in here that sort of let people come in, but I'm not quite sure that the person's qualified to do what you just said.
Well, I guess technically that would be determined through the application process, right? Where the supervisors would say, this person doesn't have the skill set that we're looking for.
So I, I'd hate to like say the same answer because it kind of makes me seem like I didn't do anything. But this was pulled from your existing code section.
From our existing code section, does this come from the state?
No, 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 this is, this is your ARB code section as it stands now. And because it's a body that kind of you created and you, you hold the regulations to, we didn't want to really play with it too much. But I agree with, with what Commissioner Mistle said. And it, it's kind of ambiguous on purpose so that the board can kind of pick and choose who they'd like to choose.
Well, they can do that anyhow.
Process.
We can do that anyhow, but I mean, I think what Fred said helps to sort of give someone given outsider so it doesn't look so, so. I don't have a good.
Yeah.
No.
Red dependent on specific, like you, you're, you know, you don't have to show your portfolio to get a job on the ARB.
Right.
Right?
That's all. I, I just kind of went like, what is that?
Can you more talk about community design standards really?
Yeah, and I mean, the beauty of the architecture review board, in my opinion, and this, even this group, is that we're diverse, we have diverse backgrounds. We're not all on the architecture review board, we're not all architects. We're developers, we're contractors, we're everybody who plays in that field and everybody brings a different viewpoint, so.
You know, so then maybe that's a flexible part of, maybe it's not here, but if we ever were to suggest something like that, some of that language, I think, would be helpful. Because I can.
Do you want to reword part of this too?
I like what Fred said.
Say it again.
At the beginning, when you were talking about.
Human scale and massing.
Oh, that one?
Yeah.
Demonstrated, gosh, I don't know. I mean, I'd have to. Like demonstrated awareness of design principles, right? Such as human scale, massing.
Pedestrian.
Pedestrian, transportation.
Materiality, all those good words.
I guess one of my questions would be, does that belong in legislative language here? Or is that like a job description on the website that says, if you want to be a part of ARB, a successful candidate looks like this, boom, 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 boom.
You can do that however you want. I would say it doesn't hurt to have it here so that it is there. I think the, the new language leaves open enough.
Just a point of clarification, I did not catch this, but actually our ARB staff member did actually request that we add historic preservation into that.
Yeah.
Demonstrated interest, competence or knowledge. We had that and then I got to take it out, then I got put back in. I think I got to take it out.
I just think that that feels, so I will give you, for instance, so I went to a site planning thing. This is many years ago, the person's no longer in your, this book will work. And this was a hotel that was going to be put in front of Centerra, but on that small road by where State Farm is. Okay, State Farm, I believe it is. And at the site meeting thing, the planning person said to the applicant, you know, you have to put a serpentine wall as a, as a knee hole wall on this, on this project. And the applicant, being not local, said, oh, okay, I'll do that. And I went up to the applicant afterwards and said, I would like you to talk to this person instead. And the, the individual said, you know, the ARB is going to want you to put a serpentine wall there in the explanation. And I'm thinking to myself, this isn't anywhere near an entrance corridor. It's that small little road that's, I don't know what the road's called, but you know, it's the one in front of. I'm thinking, no, 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 you can't use the ARB as the excuse because you want a serpentine wall in front of this, I don't know, it was like a Holiday Inn or something like that. And so I just think having, being very clear about what the role is. Plus in, when people have come to us, and I've said this to you, I think to you and, and somebody else, we've had people come to us and act like the ARB said yes to this. And so therefore you need to say yes. I don't think that's going to happen because they said, yeah, you know, it's just like, who has jurisdiction over what part of this process?
Yeah. Another word that comes to mind, and I don't know if you want to take a shot, the other word is context. You made me think of context.
That's it. That's it. That's it. That's it.
I think the classic thing that comes up for me all the time is, you know, is I know, I don't know if it's as true as it was in the past, but for a while, you know, everyone was trying to make everything Jeffersonian, you know, with white columns and red bricks. And, and I think the irony is, you look at the Monticello's visitor center and, and it has, and the, and I would say it's very Jeffersonian because it has stormwater management, it has native plants, it has a green roof. People say, well, has that Jeffersonian? Well, because he was an innovator, he was concerned with natural resources, concerned with, you know, ecology. And so in this, this idea of what does the ARB do? If we're, if, I would say if we're going out or, you know, making pantops, you know, look like little, little mini Monticello's, then we're doing it wrong. But if we're, if we're looking at, you know, community design standards and how do we build places better and more sustainably? That seems to be where we need to be going and not, you know, because I, I think if Jefferson were around today, he wouldn't be building like, he'd build Monticello. Not that Jefferson should bear a standard for judging everything, I'm just pointing it out because it has been.
I'm containing myself.
No, 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 I, but, but you know what I mean? You know, like we have like, there's little buildings.
Well, I, I'll help you with that because I was at another, a public, a public conversation about a property on, on 29. And a person in the audience said, this needs to go to the ARB because the business was not putting brick on the building. This is, this goes, needs to go to the ARB because you can't have anything on 29 that doesn't have bricks on it. It has to have red bricks on it. And the woman was passionate about that and trying to put something to the ARB. And the person just barely said anything happened and so, you know, she got what she got.
But you know, the reason the Jefferson used red brick was because they were local materials, right? So they were, you know, and so the question is, what is the sustainable local material that we have now?
That's very different. It's very different.
You know, so that's not nice.
So I mean, we're not, I'm not here trying to do the ARB thing. What I am trying to say is that I do believe that there's, that the ARB gets used as a, as the escape hatch for a bunch of stuff in our community. And if that's going to be what it is, then let's be very clear about what its role is. That's, that's, and I can see, because I know you sat on it. You know, I think about what happened on Pantops with the Porsche, where Porsche said, you want one of our dealerships, it's got to look like this. You don't want it to look like this, we'll pull their dealership. And so you figured out a way on how to, how to have the Porsche dealership sort of work with our entrance, you know, our, our entrance corridor. But this was that whole balance. What's the economic piece of it and then what's that?
So I think the team has taken away the key points of the conversation. Is there anything else that I need to touch on in Section Two or Article Two?
I'm, I'm good unless there's other questions from you all related to Article Two. Anything? All right. So moving on. That wraps up for the, the drafts that you have in front of you, just in terms of next steps. We will be with you again in May. And at that one, it'll be a little heavier lift, but still not too heavy yet. We'll be talking about permits and applications. So kind of the, the heavy part of that is considering site plans. I mean, what's listed there and in your language for your ordinance. And then non-conformities is going to be another easy one that I'm going to say it's state code. Let's not mess with it. We'll do that in May. And then in July, we will kind of wrap up looking at everything from Phase One. And then we will present to our focus group again and let them see what we've done and then move from there. So that is it for this evening. Thank you, guys.
Great job.
Thank you both. Yes.
Thanks for your feedback. Appreciate it.
Storytime in there also.
Yes.
All right. So moving on, we will have many reports. So is there any good reports in the commission? Hearing none, we'll move on to Item Six. And that's the review of the Board of Supervisors Meeting, like there was two on the docket, the fifteenth and twenty second of March. Mr. McDermott, do you?
Yeah, sorry, Kevin McDermott, the acting planning director. I don't believe, I believe we've had a meeting since the March fifteenth, Martin, is that correct? Or was that the fourteenth that we went to? Sorry. Fourteenth, all right. Apologize. I, I don't, the items on those agendas were fairly small. And you know what? I don't have the exact number of those, but I'll get back to you with what the exact outcomes of those are. Correct. And you know, there were no, no major issues came up on any of the planning board items at that time.
How about an AC forty-four update?
Yeah, AC forty-four. So as you all know, we've had some conversations recently and got a lot of great feedback from you all. We are right now in the point where we are transferring from the Stage One of Phase Two, which was regarding all those topic area reports and getting the feedback on there and moving into Stage Two, which is really going to focus on the, the planning toolkits that we're putting together. It'll be discussions on growth, management and land uses. So that, that's really where we are. We will be coming to the PC at the end of April for a work session to start to get some feedback on what we're proposing on those items. And we will also be, after that, we will be going back to our working group for another working group meeting to get them started, going out into the community and talking to them about those items that are in the, the, the segment two of Phase Two. And also following that, we'll be doing some roundtable discussions. I think we're going to have multiple roundtables that we hold around the county to get public feedback on all those items that we discussed. The, the first segment of that, of Phase Two was, was really successful. I think I heard that we got about five hundred and thirty-two responses on our, on our survey, our public survey. We did all those outreach items where we went out to the pop-ups all around the county. We got dozens of meetings and feedback from, from people in those, as well as what the working group has been doing. We have been getting worksheets back. Of course, when the working group goes out and they hold their meetings with their, their, their friends and their cohorts, we have them actually report back on what they heard from them and, and give that to us. We are going through all of that feedback right now and correlating it. And we'll have a summary of what we heard as well coming up from you all. And you'll hear more about that at the end of April when we come to you.
Just curious, does a county have like a, a marketing or media team that's kind of following what's happening and, you know?
Absolutely. We are, we have regular meetings with our community and pub, uh, community and the cake department, Public Engagement Department. And they are heavily involved in us. We, we are putting out social media information. We have our website that is constantly being updated. We are going out to NBC twenty-nine, just like Leia did. And, and on every couple, I think it's every month, we do a, a little promo on what's going on with that. And of course, then there's the updates that the public receives from, we have like a mailing list with a, with a blurb that goes out from, to all people that have signed up to get more information on.
I knew they were evolving. It's one question is more, or like documenting like these, these. I knew they were involved. I guess my question was more, or like documenting like these, these events, right? We have the community involved and.
Oh. Yeah, absolutely. We have a list of like everything that's going on. Um, and I, I don't know, I don't know if that's publicly available now, but we are trying to make that so you can, follow along and see what all we've done in the past, and what all we're planning to do in the upcoming, uh, the upcoming weeks or something.
It's like a, a movie that we made that said, this is how we do effective community engagement. You guys see like these different snippets of, you know, the county in action.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's, that's a great point, and we, we have been, uh, whenever we do go out into the community for the pop-ups or for other meetings, we are making sure we're taking photos and things like that, so we could put something like that together. That covers the public engagement we've done, because it's been a phenomenal effort. I think we're getting a lot of, out to a lot of people right now.
You can go present at Bay Cove.
So I did notice, I went to one of the ones in Crozet, and, and I noticed they, they had the pop-up in front of the library. And at that time of day, once, hell, there, there was just a handful of people coming in and out of the library. But if you walk just down the block to where the pharmacy and the coffee shop was, that parking lot was packed. And so there's a lot more people, and then maybe it's just like the difficulty of finding where you're gonna pop up in that, the parking lot. It seemed like the concentration where the people actually were during that time period was very different.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate feedback on, um, on good places to show up. Uh, I think, a lot of the locations where we did the pop-ups, they came in from, we reached out to supervisors and said, hey, is there anything going on in your district that we might be able to show up at and, and get a lot of people? And so we got, we got some recommendations for that. Uh, obviously, we missed some things and, uh, but if there's changes to that, then, you know, if you think there's a place we could, be going to and doing a pop-up event, please let us know, and we'll look to that in the future. But yeah, it was just, I mean, that we were just trying to, trying to figure out, based on our knowledge, what might be the best place. I guess they thought, library might have a lot of people at that time of day.
I, I think the library is a great place. I just think that time of day was not the best time to go to the library. So it's not, the place wasn't a good place. It's just, I'm not sure that was like the peak hours of the life.
Okay, yeah, uh, we'll keep looking, and if you have suggestions, uh, is the, things that are going on, of, uh, community events, anything like that, then, then let us know.
Wegmans and ACAC, there you go. Any new business?
I, I would just sort of, sort of share that if you have a chance, go to the school boards, the school systems, um, budget worksheet, because, it's a budget package. Because you know, sometimes people wonder, well, why aren't they, why aren't they building schools and things like that? And so, on there, they have capital projects. And they have a school being funded in South, in the South, an elementary school for the Southern feeder pattern, and an elementary school that's been funded for the Northern feeder pattern. And then they've got some things down, the stones in the yellow pink, when you go along with it, that hadn't been funded yet, and so it's in the process of being it. And then what's also interesting, because you know, a lot of times we get a lot of pushback, oh, I can't, I might like, it's, I'm throwing the, and this talks about the school building capacity in age, and so it talks about how old schools are, and how many people are in particular types of, of, um, of classrooms in, across, across the system. Which I just thought was interesting, since a lot of times people push at us. You know, how can we do something when it's not our realm to sort of say how the school system's gonna put up building, and so, I think that it may be, um, Kevin, whoever, I forget who's in charge of that part of it, but, when, in a slower part for us, that you could have somebody just explain to us what they're doing.
Sure.
Because I think it would be helpful for us to be well equipped.
Hundred percent.
To understand what the school system's doing.
Where did you get that inspiration?
On, on, on this, on this, the school's doing its, but the school system's doing its budget right now, and there's a budget sheet, there's a budget presentation. And so this was in their budget presentation.
That's a capital improvements program.
Capital projects, five years, and the top bits, the green bits are funded.
Got you.
Yellow bits being, I think, is being dis, is being discussed. And you should also know, probably you're all low on news already, with us backing out of ownership in CATE, in KTEC, the school system's also thinking about how they're going to.
You know, that capacity sheet that you have there, um, I actually think that'd be interesting if someone did that as a map, so you could see like which, which districts are over capacity, because you know, when you get, when you get new large projects occurring in a, um, in an overcapacity district, that'd be helpful, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we are, we're doing a lot of outreach right now with the, with the schools division and planning because of the comp plan. And we're providing a lot of updated data on our pipeline to them, so it would be a good opportunity for us to talk. I think they're looking at, you know, the potential for redistricting right now to help alleviate some of those, those problems. So, um, I'll reach out to them and see if there's some way we can maybe get them on a, uh, later this year on an agenda for, um, an informational presentation on how they, how they do this.
One item, I hesitate to bring this up even, but, um, for what it's worth, I attended a community open house last week, that Kevin attended also, and did an amazing job, a great job handling a full packed house of, community members who, in Batesville, were concerned about the replacement of the historic bridge that was there. And I guess it's for curiosity, I don't know if this is really other business or even planning commission business, but, what struck me is I'm very well, I, I very clearly understand the process of engagement with VDOT during rezonings, during, site plan review, all of those types of things. But when VDOT is just maintaining their roads, I don't understand clearly how they communicate with the neighborhoods that are impacted by that, or the school systems that have to drive the buses on those roads. Because it seemed to me to be pretty obvious, there was no communication during that meeting, and they came in very heavy handed, and said, we're doing this, you guys are just gonna have to figure it out. So, I don't know how that applies at all at the planning commission, um, business, but, that communication piece, I don't know if it's a, it's probably not a comp plan, it's a, or a planning or a zoning ordinance or it's, but I just wanna be supportive of staff and supportive of the community, to try to figure out how to structure and communicate those types of things with them. For what it's worth.
Thanks. I, I will say that we do have a monthly report that VDOT provides to the board of supervisors, um, at, at their meeting, so there is a, a, a monthly VDOT report, and then there's a quarterly in-person presentation of that report. Typically, that's one of the major ways that we get the information out of that maintenance, about maintenance on bridges and bridges. However, that particular bridge was somehow omitted from that, and we are, having discussions with VDOT right now as to what might have gone wrong, why they did not provide information about that.
But, but I'm gonna come along on Fred on something that has, has annoyed me for a number of years. So, the city can have a pothole on West Main Street, and Channel twenty-nine and Channel nineteen cover the pothole, cover everybody falling into the hole, I think. We have something, we have, we have, I don't even have, is what is it, ten times as much landmass as, as the city does? And we rarely, rarely, rarely get anybody from the city or twenty-nine or nineteen to come and talk to you all, about what are you doing, what are you seeing, things like that. It's like the city gets all of this media, um, on their, whatever news it is. And we never, the county is like this stepchild when it comes to being on, on the news, because that's the way in which you, people see you. They see that you're a very reasonable person, they saw you, they see that she's a very reasonable person, and so, and so that's how you make the connections. I think that was also where you were going with the his, the history. How do you tell the county's story to a public that basically doesn't have access to you on a daily day basis, but they know about all the foolishness that's happening in the city right now? I'm not, I'm not speaking about the gun, the gunplay, that's a different thing, which is the whole host of other things that happened there. But they, you know, we found out that somebody got stuck in an elevator. It's like, okay, I'm real sorry that the president got stuck in the elevator, but, why aren't I talking to you all about more important issues? I mean, that's just, that's just been a bugaboo for me for a while. I, 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 you know, I'm, I, I'm just, I'm expressing my frustration that, that, that we are an economic engine here, but yet we always seem to be, oh, don't worry, you don't have a story to tell, you're gonna go home and have some SpaghettiOs. You know, I'm, I'm sick of, I just, I'm sick of this.
I'm kind of conflicted because sometimes it's a good thing that we're not in the news.
I understand that, but I understand, but we have a good story to tell.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Right now, they only come to us when the story smells like day old cabbage, but we have a really good story to tell.
Yeah, I agree with you. But going back to something, going back to what you said, I'm, I'm older about transportation. I would argue that a lot of these transportation issues are planning issues. And I've argued, for example, for a long time, that the, what gravel roads they pave is a planning issue. Because, because those are, in fact, they're like de facto upzonings, because, the, you know, but, but I think there's, there's just a short, I mean, I think there are big planning implications to a lot of these transportation infrastructure things that are, are happening.
They don't give you any questions, they don't ask you whether or not something should be up, since you gravelled it to that. Because you're right, there's a big thing.
They occasionally cover the, when we go to the board for the secondary six-year plan, you might, you might see something on it, not, it's not a regular feature.
But see, I mean, I would, I would like more attention to, you know, to that sort of thing, because a lot of people don't understand, for example, when they're gonna pave, um, and they're gonna pave Dickwood's Road, and that's a road that was used by the Western Cross Country team. I mean, I think, you know, there are, just as an example, there are transportation issues that I think do have planning implications and that affect a lot of things. It'd be nice, sometimes know about those.
I was gonna make a suggestion, um, as, uh, councillor.
Not councillor. Yes, PC, PC.
Commissioner Vivid suggested with the school board and the school having sort of a mini report on VDOT, as well, not to the extent that the, um, supervisors get, but something to that effect, maybe on a periodic, maybe on a quarterly basis or something. I think that would be really helpful. If there's time on our.
Two, two of us and Kevin can strategize on it in some of our, our Monday meetings. Yeah, we can strategize on what makes sense.
Yeah.
Kind of lays out, um, any old business, right, that's your follow-up?
Can I, can I just add one thing? Sorry, uh, back to the board of supervisors. I, I realize what was going on there. There, the two meetings, one of them was a budget meeting. So there, so right now, the board is doing their, um, regular budget meetings, uh, so that was, I believe, the twenty-second is what happened that time. So it was a regular budget meeting, um, they have different topics each time. The fifteenth, the two items that were on that public hearing, were, were the Scottsville Transmission Line, if you remember, Esmont to Scottsville Transmission Line. You all approved that, that was approved by the, uh, board as well, and the Spring Hill Development Rights Amendment, if you all remember that one.
That's funny, it was Thomas Jefferson Parkway or something like that?
Uh, yeah, I think that was off of, um, it was off of.
No, it's, it's in Ivy.
I guess the one in Ivy?
It was, it was the large parcel that, who's developing rights.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. We had a, a nice discussion in the PC meeting on that. So, yes, uh, so those were the two items, just, sorry, I forgot those.
Oh, no worries. Any questions for Kevin before we close out?
Kevin? Can you please talk to them about cancelling the meeting on the eleven?
We've got that.
Well, do, and y'all just quite step ahead of me, so if we were to. No, that's all good. Our next meeting will be April the twenty-fifth, so no business on the eleventh.
April the twenty-fifth?
April the twenty-fifth, so.
And then the meeting on the eleven is canceled, and then this meeting will adjourn to April twenty-fifth at, at four o'clock.
At four o'clock?
For the work session. That's right. All right, so for the record, the next meeting will be April twenty-fifth at four o'clock, so is there a motion to adjourn until that time?
So, dude?
All right.